Hold it up proudly today.
I didn't know you were a Panthers fan, though.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's city council workshop. And we will have workshop for the hour prior to our council meeting to discuss any agenda items, as well as we do have a presentation this morning. But before we start the presentation, I would like to ask council if you have any agenda items that you want to discuss before the regular meeting begins.
Mayor, as far as ordinance 2532, hold on a second. Yeah, about the parking. And I did have one question about the 2567. And probably Michelle would be able to answer this. As far as, do we know what entails in the 14 million as far as what portion, what exactly is going to be done? Or do we?
The 14 million is on the PDL savings?
Yes.
Those are the PDL improvements. Every little detail of that, I think Brian is more informed on the actual project itself.
I didn't know if it was already broken out of what exactly was going to be included in this portion.
It is.
It is broken out. I can go back and send all of you the exhibit from the lease document that we approved. And it has it fairly well outlined in that what is covered in the $20 million PDL project that we've talked about. But essentially, it is new player facilities that are, if you actually go out there now, out in Wrightfield, you'll see that they've demolished the old clubhouse, they're rebuilding that clubhouse, they're rebuilding the press box in that area in order to put new AV equipment and essentially new player tracking equipment into that area. And they're making some minor improvements interior of the park outside of those. But those are the two main things, is the new clubhouse, which includes a lot of the PDL requirements.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, as far as the parking.
That is 2025-32.
I know we had talked about changing this several months ago, down to a 90-day period. I don't know, with everything going on and how we found out that all our businesses were so down in that area, I almost think that we need to completely, not even do a 90 days, cut it off October 1st to March 1st, myself. That's just a suggestion.
That's interesting you bring that up, because that was one of the things, we've talked about at staff, because the way the ordinances reads now, it allows the manager 30-day, 90 days per calendar year.
Right.
So, we had talked about possibly amending that to 120 days, which would get November, December, January, February.
Okay. That would cover that.
120 would give you four months.
Okay.
So, we can amend this.
From 90 to 120 during the meeting itself.
If there's a consensus.
There's a consensus among council.
Yeah.
Well, I think the reason why, it was originally, we were talking about doing it for longer, but there were council members that were concerned that it was too long.
I don't remember how we settled on 90 days. I just, I know it's in there. I just don't recall the conversation of how we settled on 90.
And Fox, I know I asked you a question this morning, and since we're in workshop, I'd like for you to state it now and again in the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
About how this affects the employee parking portion of it, exactly where they can park.
Yes, ma'am. Let me get my notes back in order, please. If this amendment passes, it would allow the manager to develop an employee parking program. What we have outlined is that this would be, all full-time employees would get a decal once a year. It would change over every January, it'd be a different, similar decal to what we have now, but it would be different color, let's say, let's just say for this conversation, that we start in January of '26. They'd have a red '26. They get one, they only get one. The dog eats it, the car gets sold, the windshield gets broken, sorry, you get one. And it's only valid at meters in the convention center. It is not valid in residential decal-only parking spots. So, we're talking downtown and the convention center only. We think it's a nice benefit for our employees, for all the hard work they do during the year. And I just read, North Myrtle Beach did a similar program within the last 60 days, 45 days, somewhere along there, with their decal parking.
So, it limits the city employees only to the convention center?
And downtown where the parking meters are. Similar to what we're talking about, this free parking, I'm going to call it parking holiday for this conversation, the 120 days that we were just talking about with Ms. Hatley, it's valid at the same spot there. So, instead of 120 days, it's eight, they get eight months, because they would be able to park there for the four months everybody else can, they just get an additional eight months. The convention center and those spots only, not in the neighborhoods.
Fox, I have received several emails from residents in my area, and then I think we all got an email from our former PIO late yesterday, saying that, the residents are saying, you know, wait a minute, we pay taxes here, these other employees don't. Why would they be getting this benefit? And then, what we got this more, late last night, said that it may be in violation, what we're doing, proposing to do, may be in violation of our code. Have you had a chance to look at that?
Well, the code part, Amy and I had this conversation this morning, that's why we're amending it. The city manager cannot do it unilaterally. We have to amend the code to allow it, which is what this amendment would do. Let Ms. Amy talk about that.
And no, they don't pay taxes, but it is becoming harder and harder to hire good employees, and retention is important, and this is a way to offer another benefit to our employees to help retain them.
I want to point out that this does not create an employee parking plan. This allows the manager to create an employee parking plan.
Correct. And also dismantle one, if there is one.
We're dismantling, yes.
Yes, that's correct. What Fox stated, that's the purpose of this amendment would be to create, to allow the manager to define and create the employee decal parking program. In the absence of this amendment, there is no authority for employee parking decals. And if, with regard to the property tax issue, the code does link the resident decals to property taxes, but there's no line item on your tax bill for parking payment, if that makes sense. There's no fee, there's no, it's just how we have chosen to distinguish who is a resident and who is not.
And do we have to therefore amend other parts of the code?
I don't believe so. I think you're essentially creating another category. We have one, we have one category, which is the resident parking decal program. We also have non-resident decals, and now we would have employee. So, you'd have three categories.
So, basically, three buckets.
Correct. That's a good way to think about it, yes.
City of Myrtle Beach employees are paid with tax money, is that correct?
I'm not sure where else it comes from, yes.
Right. So, they're paid, they're paid with tax money. If we offer this as a benefit, that means this benefit is essentially paid for with tax money, but it's also not increasing taxes.
That is true.
Like, the city employees are paid by the business and the residents and what goes on in Myrtle Beach. If we offer another benefit, it still comes to the same thing.
Just like health insurance or the rec center, ability to access the rec centers, I'm sure other, the clinic.
Yeah.
The employee clinic, the library, I didn't think about that, library.
Basically, this, this just adds to a list of, you know, I was coming from, you know, Tennessee, and I wanted to look at different benefits that the city offers, that's just another benefit that the city offers.
That's how I believe the manager plans to utilize it.
It's only for eight months, if this amendment that Ms. Hatley just talked about passes. It's only good for the downtown core and the convention center.
And it's not a permanent thing.
No, it's one year.
At your discretion.
One year at a time.
At the city manager's discretion.
If we see abuse, we will jerk it back, make adjustments.
And if council wants to.
They can always come back and change it.
Come back and change it. Right.
I would love to see every city employee live in the city limits and not need this, but there are multiple factors that city employees don't live in the city limits, cost being one of them, and just not wanting to live in a city, wanting to live more in the country. But they still could enjoy the benefits of, you know, additional benefits for being an employee of the city with this.
Any other questions about that? Mr. Lauter, do you want to come join us? I mean, we have a seat for you.
She's got showered today.
Do we have any idea as far as the, I mean, what would it probably cost?
I don't know how many full-time, say, 1,000 full-time employees, maybe? I don't know.
Some of which are already city residents.
Yeah, there's numerous that are city residents, I don't know.
Many of which will not.
Will not utilize the benefit. That's correct.
If you're a city resident, you're not going to get a sticker. I'm a city resident, I don't need a, I'm not going to get one.
But even those that do, that don't have them, still may not.
Still may not take full advantage of it.
That's just like the library. Many of them don't take full advantage of the library. I don't. I should, but I don't.
Jackie, was that everything on that, that you wanted to talk about?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for discussing it.
Before we move on to the procurement amendments, I'd like to talk about 2025-50, the scooter ordinance. I did have a question from a resident on Saturday about, was this as strict as we could possibly make this? And Amy, I believe you and Josh told us that it is as strict as it can be, and still being in line with state laws too, correct?
Correct. And there's also a balance, too, of trying to make sure that people that use them to get around can get around too, right? And so, trying to find that balance is probably one of the more challenging ordinances, I think, that we've come up, you know, had to address and try to balance all of the different interests of allowing mobility, balancing that with public safety for people on the scooters and people driving and pedestrians. And so, that's, some of the things that we had to balance. I know one thing that I've continued to hear is the impact on the J-1 students. I will tell you, I have spoken with, or staff has spoken with Kathy Winfrey, spoken with the folks at the J-1 housing, and one of the major employers of J-1 students, and they are overwhelmingly in support of this, just because of the, they're tired taking kids to the hospital. That's what it comes down to. And so, they can still use bikes and other modes of transportation, but if you want to add.
I mean, I would say, we didn't consider an outright ban on scooters, so I haven't, frankly, I haven't given a lot of thought onto whether there would be a conflict with state law. I don't think there would be, because there really are no state-level regulations on these e-scooters, which is part of the reason why we're having to do what we're doing. So, short of an outright ban on them in the city limits, which I'm, I mean, they're, then you're, there are children who use these in their neighborhood streets just to ride around and play, you would be banning that sort of thing too. So, we didn't, we didn't consider that. That would be kind of the next step.
We don't want to ban fun.
That's right.
All right, thank you. Does council have anything else on the agenda that you want to discuss before the meeting? All right, then we will move on to Jeremy Roof and Ann Sowers are going to talk about the proposed procurement ordinance amendments.
Good morning.
So, Ann and I come to you this morning to propose a few amendments to our current procurement ordinance. As you all know, inflation is real, rising costs and service demand is real. A lot of things have gone up in the last few years. We see it at the grocery store, we see it wherever we go out to eat, and we see it in procurement. We see it daily. Ann's going to go through and kind of show you what has gone up. These are things that you're going to be able to identify very easily. This list is not all-inclusive when it comes to price. What we're wanting to do is get a little more in line with our thresholds to raise them. So, Ann is going to show you exactly what our purchasing threshold is right now and what we're proposing. This will put us in line with probably like Hilton Head, Charleston, which they're very similar in service demand and delivery. And finally, we also have another amendment that we want to share with you, where we'll now be able to accept bids online as opposed to hand-delivered. So, the solicitation process will now be online as well. All right? I'll hand it over to Ann.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Our current dollar thresholds are as follows. Up to $2,500, city employees who have the right for spending can do so on a limited purchase order. Between $2,500 and $7,500, again, employees with the purchasing rights can do so by getting three quotes and then acting on their best quote. Anything over $7,500 has to come through the procurement office for proper vetting and proper purchasing. As Jeremy mentioned, inflation is real. This is why we need to look at this. Rising costs continue, no matter how best we negotiate, those prices are still going up due to market forces that we cannot control, okay? If we raise our thresholds, this is going to allow for a more fluid purchasing system that gives our employees with those purchasing rights to keep the services of the city moving without the red tape that can come from slowing it down. And like Jeremy said, it's going to put us in line with other jurisdictions in the state, which we will see in a slide or two. Here's just a representative sample of some of the things that have increased over time. We're looking at uniforms at a 15% increase, beach rake parts that are grooming the beach every day, 15%, janitorial supplies, 20%, fire department equipment, 14%, stone that our parks and recs use, 20%, roll carts, which is our trash bins that get collected weekly, 3% to 5%. IT is going up 10% to 20%. And the big one that hurts the most is the brass, which is the water and sewer parts, depending on the size, anywhere between 4% and like 80%. And brass is expensive, it's made out of those, all those raw materials, and those commodities are going up. And we don't want to be without them, as we saw this past weekend. We need to have them on hand.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do y'all have a cap on how much you allot each employee as far as their uniforms?
There is a cap. I do not know what that is off the top of my head. That is handled by each individual department.
Okay.
Is budgeted each year by each individual department? And of course, they're going to vary. You take a solid waste worker, they're going to need probably the boot, the steel toe boots more often than one of your project managers who just walks on site a few times a week. Also, your parks and rec might go through more t-shirts. So it's really based on the need for each employee in each department.
Okay, thank you.
So in order to compensate for that, what are we proposing? We're proposing that we take the $2,500 limit and increase to 5,000, no additional quotes required. We are proposing that we take a small purchase, which was 2,500 to 7,500, and move that from 5,000 up to 15,000. That would require three quotes on behalf of the departments, and then they act upon their best quote to keep those services moving. Anything therefore, did I misspeak? Did I miss a line? Oh, all right, I'm still on track. Anything 15,000 to 50,000, that's going to route through procurement, and we're going to get the three quotes and we're going to vet them. And then anything over 50,000, we will do a formal solicitation, either a bid or a proposal, or qualifications, or whatever might be needed.
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
If you could go back to the slide before. So in the event, so we're, you're talking about goods, but would this also include services? So if, say, a consultant is hired and the total contract would be over $50,000, would that still adhere to a RFP process?
We can pursue that option. Consultants are often acquired through negotiation of qualifications and price. Locally, we're looking at Georgetown County, their threshold is $5,000. City of Charleston, 5,000 for a small purchase with a bid threshold of 100,000. Ori County is 10,000 for a small purchase and a bid threshold of 50,000. And then the town of Hilton Head, 25,000 for small and bid threshold of 100,000. And then this is more of a breakdown of how each municipality handles that. Questions?
So a small purchase, let's go back to small purchases, changing that to up to $5,000, who has the authority to make a small purchase?
Anyone in the department with signing rights that have been granted to them by their department head.
Okay. So say someone with signing rights goes and decides that they're going to purchase something that they shouldn't, do we check that?
Signing rights involves two signatures. Sorry, folks.
We didn't mean to choke you up.
Two signatures, the employee who's wishing to make the purchase, and then typically the one up. So there's internal verification as to, is this really needed and is it appropriate?
Okay. And then somebody's got to reimburse that, that would go to the finance department, right? Do they see that purchase and find out what, make sure that that purchase is appropriate? So like, if I were to, we don't have purchasing authority, but if I did have purchasing authority and I were to buy something for myself personally...
In our APT, we frequently do that. It was two weeks ago, there was a signature on something that I made, and they weren't sure whose this was, so they wouldn't touch it until I went in there and confirmed exactly what it was.
So we have checks and balances, so people, this isn't just a blank check that any city employee can spend $5,000 on whatever they want, and nobody looks at it?
Absolutely not. And I will take the timeout to give a shout-out to our accounts payable team. I work with them on a daily basis, and they catch a lot and they keep us all in line.
Great.
Yes, I want to expand on that as well. AP, they literally check every single purchase, every single signature. They are meticulous in records, meaning that there is, for each type of purchase that comes through, there are certain things they're looking for, and they check them. They really do, you know? Donna is great, but Donna, when you see her, you say, ah, what did I do wrong, basically? So she'll let you know when something goes wrong, but yes, you're 100% right. This is not a blank check for anybody to just go out and write $5,000 worth of whatever they want to buy. That's not how it works. There are checks and balances in place, there are controls in place. We're just simply saying that with the rise of costs, we do not want to slow down service delivery for red tape. We want to leave that autonomy within the department to make a decision. However, you know, the checks and balances always remain.
Like, say, the rec department, they're short on jerseys for one team, and they need to get more jerseys, and it's going to be under $5,000. They can order those jerseys without going up and up and up and getting procurement to get involved, which might take weeks or so to order jerseys.
Yeah, and it won't take weeks, but, yeah, yeah.
All right. They might not be at work at 6:00 PM when the game is starting.
Exactly, they can make that decision.
When they need to buy a new football for the game.
That's right. They can make that decision right then and there, and they don't have to route through procurement. And, you know, procurement is fast, but they're not that fast, meaning that, yes, right now, you need it right now, it might be an hour before she sees the email or sees it come through requisition self-service through NFOR. But yes, they have that ability, visit under that threshold, to make that decision right then and there.
Have you seen a decrease in sole source requests at the, above the $5,000 level?
I have not, have you?
You don't see a lot of that.
What was the question again?
Sole source, do you see a lot of, I'm thinking about the emergent, you know, kind of like an emergent thing, like someone, oftentimes, emergency purchases are because someone didn't plan ahead, but, you know, I'm wondering if we're seeing high level of sole source purchasing or...
We're actually seeing a decrease in sole source purchasing since we enacted our sole source and our single source ordinance, and we are tracking that. Emergencies are clearly defined by ordinance, and so we do address those. But we've actually seen a decrease in that.
Good. That's good.
And then, excuse me, changes to our sealed bid procedure. We are in the process of moving from a manual, traditional, paper-based system to a digital online format. We are expecting go-live in the next 45 to 60 days. I have a implementation meeting tomorrow morning, and that'll give me more information and timetable on that. We will still accept bid documents traditionally. We don't want to limit competition. We want to support our local business and our local community. There are still some mom-and-pop shops out there who do things the traditional way, and we don't want to rule them out. So we will have that dual option available to us. Questions?
How do you roll out the sealed bids, the new process, to business?
I will have more information on that tomorrow. I mean, literally, 9:30 is the meeting tomorrow.
I'll look forward to it whenever you can.
Okay, thank you.
While some may move over to digital, entering their bids digitally, they can still bring in hand-delivered the paper, the same way they always have. So rolling it out, even if they don't do it the first time, if they say, oh, they delivered it, and you say, well, I know you drove here to deliver this to us, but just to let you know, we also have this program, so if you'd like to do it in the future like that.
Yes, we have that option.
We're leaving the ordinance open to say that it can still be delivered by traditional means and electronic delivery as well. So that way, yes, if somebody wants to come there and deliver it by hand, we'll take it. As long as it's within the purchasing guidelines of the time that it was supposed to be accepted, we'll take it. Same thing for the electronic.
Waiting to see if Michelle has something.
To follow up on a question that was asked, once a year, we do a workshop, usually in the spring, March, it's National Procurement Month, we like to celebrate that. So we make workshops available to our business community so that they can come in, they can see what we do, how do they register, how do they use the system, how do they submit bids? So we make that available, and that's going to help with the transition as well.
And so that piggybacks to the question that you just asked. That'll be something new for us this year with the online system to say, all right, we've done it this way for the past 25 years, but now we have a new way of accepting those bids, and that'll educate the public, it'll educate the business community on the new procedures. And that way, everybody understands how it's going to work.
How do you all inform the business community about the workshop?
We have traditionally run that through our Facebook. We will put out mass emails to our vendor list. We have advertised on other platforms.
You should probably get the chamber to send something out to their business members.
Absolutely, we can reach out to the chamber as well.
I just want to make sure that we're not missing new businesses that may not know about our procurement processes and including them in this workshop.
I think the chamber is a very good idea. I know we have done some mixer events with the chamber down at Reed Rec, and that introduces procurement to a lot of the folks who come to that event. So we are getting the word out as much as we know how to do.
Anything else? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else for workshop? We don't have any executive session items today.
No, ma'am.
Will, are you sure?
I'm sorry to disappoint you, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, we will start our regular city council meeting at 10:00 AM. All right, well, we will start our regular city council meeting at 10:00 AM.
Good morning, everyone. We have a great crowd this morning. We're happy to have you all with us. Welcome. I would ask if you would please silence your cell phones and if you wish, please rise and join council as Dr. Connor leads us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand if you're able.
Gracious Creator, we gather here in the heart of Myrtle Beach to seek Your guidance in the work of governance. We thank You for the beauty of this city, its vibrant community, and its resilient people. Bless the members of this council and our mayor and city staff as we deliberate today. Grant us wisdom, compassion, and courage to stand up for our city. May decisions promote peace and prosperity. Inspire us to listen to all with open hearts and speak with integrity as we navigate challenges and opportunities before us. Lord, we offer this prayer in gratitude and humility, trusting in You. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thanks.
The council has had time to look over today's agenda, and I would now ask for a motion for approval.
Does it move?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Smith, second from Dr. Connor. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2025?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Hatley, second from Mr. Chestnut. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We're going to have a very special proclamation this morning, especially for those of you who have grown up in Myrtle Beach or the Myrtle Beach area, and that is to honor the Family Kingdom.
Good morning. I have Craig Atkins coming behind me, the general manager of Family Kingdom. I'd also like to invite the management team of Family Kingdom to please come on down as we read this special proclamation. Come on. All right. And they will be celebrating almost 60 years on Ocean Boulevard coming up in 2026, so very exciting. All right, a proclamation honoring Family Kingdom. Whereas Family Kingdom amusement park has been a beloved oceanfront attraction since 1966, delighting generations of residents and visitors. And whereas businessmen Les "Quirky" Powers and Bill Prescott purchased Family Kingdom in September 2022, stepping in to preserve and revitalize one of Myrtle Beach's most iconic landmarks. And whereas not long after their purchase, Hurricane Ian brought several feet of storm surge and saltwater damage, yet the new owners remained committed to reopening for the 2023 season with major upgrades and improvements. And whereas the revitalization included cleaning and repainting existing attractions, improving weather protection, adding new rides such as Flip Side and Loop Fighter, and updating the park's signature rides such as the Swamp Fox Roller Coaster, the 1930s-era Carousel, and the Giant Wheel. And whereas Mr. Powers and Mr. Prescott's dedication to restoring Family Kingdom earned them the Amusement Today Publishers Pick Renaissance Award and strengthened Myrtle Beach's reputation as a destination for family fun and entertainment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Myrtle Beach recognizes and thanks Mr. Powers and Mr. Prescott for their investment, leadership, and commitment to preserving a cherished piece of Ocean Boulevard history and contributing to a better and brighter Myrtle Beach. Signed and sealed this 14th day of October, 2025.
Good morning.
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 I have a few words to share with everyone this morning. As mentioned, unfortunately, Bill Prescott and Quirky Powers not able to attend today, so you've got me instead. But we're really proud of everything that we've accomplished. And first, on behalf of our entire team, we'd like to thank Mayor Brenda Bethune and all the members of city council for this recognition. This means a great deal to everyone in our organization, and we appreciate it very much. When we took over Family Kingdom, our goal was to preserve what we believe is a Myrtle Beach landmark. We wanted to give new life to a beloved part of Myrtle Beach's history and help this area of downtown shine again as a family and entertainment destination. Last month, we were surprised and humbled to receive the Renaissance Award at the Golden Ticket Ceremony in Charlotte, North Carolina. This was an international award given to us for saving Family Kingdom from being shuttered and torn down. It was a great honor for us to receive that award, but equally, and actually more important to us, is to be recognized here at home by our own city. Again, this is very, very special to us. We would like to also thank some of the city staff, including Brian Tucker, Fox, Chris Thompson, Ken May, John Johnson, and so many others who have supported us throughout this journey. Your trust and collaboration along the way was necessary and has meant everything. Over the past three years, we've made tremendous progress, but there's still much more for us to do, and we hope that we can continue to count on your support and partnership as we move forward together. Our commitment remains strong to grow with Myrtle Beach, to continue to invest in this community and to be a good neighbor in this thriving, resilient city. Thank you all again for this incredible honor. We're proud to be part of Myrtle Beach's story and excited to be part of Myrtle Beach's bright future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will have our communications and creative services update.
Hey, City Council, Chastity Pendergrass here with your communications update. Paving began in the Arts and Innovation District last week. The sections of Broadway Street and 8th Avenue North that have been under construction for the last few months look better than ever. Crews are planning to move on to a small section of Oak Street later this month. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers announced the Beach Renourishment Project will begin in North Myrtle Beach in December and work its way south, getting to the northern parts of city limits in February. This project's timeline is weather-dependent. The Police Department honored the five-year mark since Officer Jacob Panter died. It was a somber occasion at the MBPD Annex on Friday, October 3rd. Who will never forget Jacob. World champion Melissa Jefferson-Wooden taught more than 100 kids at the Myrtle Beach Track and Field Clinic. This was her fourth year back at the event. Fellow Olympian TT Terry and several other world track and field champions also helped. National Night Out was a success yet again. Hundreds of people came to the convention center for food, fun, and friends. Congratulations to the neighborhood watch groups that won awards for the best decorated table and best dessert. Rain didn't stop hundreds of people from running in the Myrtle Beach Mini Marathon. Congratulations to all the runners who finished in tough conditions, and thank you to all city staff members who worked in the elements. Crabtree Memorial Gym hosted an amateur powerlifting competition. Participants showed off their best bench press, deadlift, and squat. It's officially spooky season, and the front of the John Watts Public Works Administration Building is decked out in Halloween decorations. And while we're talking about Halloween, here's a reminder that you can submit your home for the citywide Halloween decorating contest. You have until October 20th to submit photos of your home to be put up for public voting. You can find the link to submit on the Myrtle Beach City Government Facebook page. Encourage your family and friends, too. Looking ahead, the flags for the Field of Honor near Warbird Park will be assembled this week. The display will be up November 6th through the 12th. The Branch Strand Humane Society's Walk for the Animals is Sunday, October 19th from noon till 4:00 at Grand Park in the Market Common. Pet owners can dress with their pets in Halloween costumes. The Police Department's Night of Knowledge returns to the Train Depot Thursday, October 23rd. And Fall Fling will be bigger and better than ever this year. It's moved to Doug Shaw Memorial Stadium to accommodate an expected bigger crowd, and it all takes place Saturday, October 25th from 5:00 until 8:00 in the evening. That's all for now. Hope you have a great rest of your week.
All right, thank you, Chastity. Do we have any non-agenda items from the public?
Yes, ma'am. Ava Rigney.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, city councils.
Good morning.
The rest of everybody here. Well, last week, I submitted a petition that were signed by the businesses in 9th Avenue to 10th Avenue, Ocean Boulevard. And that is to petition the city and the council to approve a gun-free zone. Then I got a letter from the city attorney saying that it can't be done, so therefore that's that. But today, or actually last night, I put together a revised plan. Instead of calling it gun-free zone, because that's not really the intention. The real intention is not to take guns away from the good guys. And there are ways that the good guys can work closely with the law enforcement to gain, you know, like a training jacket so that everybody will be safe. Because the idea is that once you draw your gun, you should have less than one second and hit the target just as accurately as you can. But of course, there are times that you'll miss the target. And see, that's where the liability comes in for the good guys, civilly and criminally. And it can be really financially difficult to fight for. So what this is is a petition to revise my plan, and I respectfully submit this revised plan for your review and consideration. This plan has been carefully updated to enhance public safety while supporting the well-being of our residents, visitors, and local businesses by establishing a public safety zone in this key area, which I have told earlier is the 9th Avenue to 10th Avenue, Ocean Boulevard. It's only 700 feet, linear feet. It's really short. And only also for three months out of the year. So there's a really good possibility that it can pass if you can do an ordinance for the time being until it's challenged, and then the Supreme Court will have to decide for us, the state Supreme Court. But it's a step so that we can at least show our visitors and the public that we care about their safety. So the safety of our city is paramount, and proactive measures like this demonstrate Myrtle Beach's commitment to protecting its citizens and guests. I urge the council to give this plan your thoughtful consideration and take the necessary steps to implement a solution that benefits both the public and our local economy. I respectfully submit these two documents. One was the original with the signature of the businesses and the revised plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigney. You can give those to the city clerk if you wish. Order, Mr. Brewer. That's all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mayor and council for this morning's consent agenda. We have one item for your consideration, which is second reading ordinance 2025-51 approving an execution of a temporary right-of-way easement to the South Carolina Department of Transportation relating to city-owned property having PIN number 443-0000-0010 located at the intersection of U.S. Highway 17 Business and Harrelson Boulevard. This is the easement from Midway Park to Harrelson Boulevard that we talked about last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me. Connect to the Greenway. It's be a 10-foot wide multi-use path, and we're, the city is receiving $18,700 for this temporary easement.
This does connect to the East Coast Greenway?
It will.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-51?
So move.
Okay, I heard Dr. Connor first, and I believe Mr. McClure made the second. Any discussion from council?
Fox, is this part of a larger plan, or are they just putting a path in front of our lot?
Let Ms. Curry answer that. I think this is just for that area, but I don't know if there's a longer term.
So this is part of the DOT's road safety project on
So this is part of the DOT's road safety project on King's Highway on the south end that has a number of safety features with median adjustments, sidewalk improvements. And this is something that, while they were in the planning stages, we met with them and said, this is connectivity that would benefit connecting one of our parks to the East Coast Greenway. So they included it at our request in this plan, and they're going to be constructing it.
So do you know what the northern bounds and the southern bounds of their highway project are?
29th South, I believe it goes up to 27th North.
So South Carolina Department of Transportation, who owns King's Highway, is doing work from 29th Avenue South.
27th, I think it's 27th North. I think that's the extent of that road safety project.
To upgrade that road?
Yes.
This piece just happens to be on private property that the city owns?
Correct, due to the existing infrastructure that's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, is there a, sorry, any other discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Okay, being none, is there, all of in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, who carries? The first item on our regular agenda is the second reading of ordinance 2025-48. I will ask Mayor Pro Tim Louder to take over this portion, and I will recuse myself because my husband represents Pickleport.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-48 approving the execution and delivery by the City of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, of a concession agreement between the city and Pickleport Myrtle Beach LLC with respect to a six-acre portion of PIN number 443-000-0015 in the City of Myrtle Beach.
Good morning. There have been no changes since first reading. Happy to answer any questions, happy to talk through in any degree of detail that you all want to about the agreement. Let you proceed and get it on the record, and then we can go from there.
Before we go into discussion, let's go ahead and get a motion, a second on the floor.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Motion from Dr. Connor, and a second from Ms. Hackney.
I'll provide you a quick recap. We have been working with Pickleport, as you know, for some time. We executed a letter of intent with Dwight Hunsucker, who was the founder of Pickleport back in January. They've continued to go through the process. They have continued to check all the boxes. The last box that needed to be checked was National Park Service agreeing to the document, which they did, I think, just about six weeks ago, and now we're, this is the last step before we execute the agreement and move ahead. Just as a recap, they are proposing to use six acres of property between number one tee box and number four tee box at Whispering Pines to erect a Pickleport, a pickleball facility. It's a public, a public property, public access. Just as, again, a recap, they expect to spend about $5 million to build the building, do all of the improvements on the property. They will also be paying us in the first year $17,500. Once they are finished and the project is stabilized, they will pay us $35,000 per year for the concession agreement. And that goes through years three through five. Beyond that, it is indexed for inflation. It's a 20-year agreement with a number of extensions beyond that. Again, happy to talk through any specific questions, but that's the, that's the broad strokes at this point.
What happens if they cease to operate as Pickleport?
We would, we would bring back those improvements, so we would retain ownership of those improvements in that, in that event. There's a, there's a number of, um, conditions because this is publicly owned property. It is also under the purview and jurisdiction of the National Park Service. So there's some limitations in this agreement that you wouldn't normally find on a private sector lease. So for example, they, they do not have the ability to collateralize any of the improvements, so they can't go get a mortgage on the property. It has to be used for public recreation. So there's a number of things there. One of the other things is, in the event that they are not operational, all of the assets become our assets.
And we are not putting one penny into building a building?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is, this is private development on public property. Mr. Hunsucker, who this is, this is Dwight's vision, is terribly upset that he couldn't be here today. But I think Trad Teal and TC Coughlin are here if you have any questions about the operation of the facility.
I would, I would be interested in maybe hearing from Trad or someone regarding your, how you're going to roll this out, memberships, those types of things. A lot of people have been asking.
There's a lot of excitement.
We're really excited about the Pickleport. We believe it's going to be a huge, huge benefit for the city and for residents, and also bring in a lot of tourism. We're excited to break ground and get going. When it comes to specific memberships, we haven't really, we've got about six different options, and everyone, you know, points different directions on what everybody thinks is best. We have engaged a lot with the public. We've put out a lot of surveys to sort of take everybody's temperature, what they think's best. We have a pretty significant email list, which shows the interest on this project. But we haven't officially announced what membership plans are going to be. But there'll be a pay-as-you-play option for, probably more for tourists. If you're a local, you'll probably want to be at some sort of membership. Now, how that membership structure, it might be a partial membership or a full-time play as much as you want, but we're still in the works on that. Was there another question you had for me on that one?
Anyone else? Any question from the public? Yes, ma'am. Come up to the podium, please, ma'am.
Maybe two or three questions, is that okay? Okay, so Brenda Bitoun's husband is involved in this deal, so I would like to know what is the actual value of the project, and how much will he be paid out of that? The second question is that I believe the $17,000 that you're going to be paying the city is too cheap, even though that's only on, while you're building it. And then the first, I mean, the second through the fifth year is $35,000. It's still very cheap for six acres, prime land. And so I believe we need to see the actual contract, make it public, so we can actually see it and read it through.
Thank you.
I can address those, but if you have any other questions for Mr. Teal?
Thank y'all.
We have, we have addressed the idea of this being prime property and the rates being too low. We've, we've discussed that before. As a reminder, the property is under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service. It has to be used for public recreation. It also has limitations on it, which is the collateralization that I mentioned earlier. All of those things would impact evaluation of the property. Again, if you compare, the, the only real comparable property here is Whispering Pines itself. Whispering Pines is roughly 200 acres, just over 200 acres, and we receive $175,000 a year or so. $184,175 in 2024. Again, of that $184,000, $71,000 of that goes back into a capital projects account. But even if you include that in the rent and you divide it by the per acre, they're still only paying $877 per acre per, per year, whereas Pickleport pays $5,833 per acre per year. So I, I do understand the rationalization that if this piece of property were picked up out of the middle of the golf course and moved to King's Highway or Ocean Boulevard or wherever, that that number may seem low. But I think folks don't necessarily appreciate the restrictions on the property, both the federal restrictions and then the oversight from us and the limited, the limited use. So it's, it's a very niche piece of property with, with a lot of constraints. So I'll address that. As far as the broker's commission, it's a, it's a fairly standard, if not a little lower than standard, agreement. So on a rental agreement or a lease agreement, it's a, it's a percentage of the total revenue collected, and it's 6%, I believe, is what we ended up. I haven't honestly looked at that in, in a little bit. I think the, the commission comes out to $25,000 over the, over the term. But that's based on the term of the collection that we will get over the 20 years.
And that is paid by the developer?
That's actually paid by the city. In, in most, yeah, in most instances, if you bring us a lease client, again, this is not a traditional scenario, but in, in the market, if you take a client to a piece of property, the property owner would be the one paying that commission.
Any other questions from the public? Here are none. All of in favor? Oh, excuse me? Yes, Martina?
I want you to clarify that you're saying the city paid the commission?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All of in favor of the second reading of ordinance 2025-48 signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Louder.
Yes, ma'am.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-49.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-49 approving a development agreement between the City of Myrtle Beach and SCG 2300 LLC and provide an incentive voucher as authorized by Section 15-53 of the City Code.
All right, again, second reading, no changes since first reading. Happy to answer any questions, happy to hit the highlights of, of this ordinance.
If you would please review the highlights, since not everyone who is here may have heard it the first time.
Be happy to. So SCG 2300 LLC is proposing to build a similar or second sister tower to what we know as Ocean's 22. They're just going to do it on 23rd Avenue, so it will likely be Ocean's 23. The anticipated construction cost of that tower is $230 million. Just to give you an idea, that is 300% higher than what Ocean's 22 cost to build just, just a number of years ago. So you've seen some significant cost escalations. It's likely to be the largest commercial development in the city. I think after first reading, there was a little bit of confusion. This is a private development. The city has no ongoing relationship with the developer. We're not, to Councilwoman Hatley's point earlier, outside of this incentive ordinance, there's no other participation between the city and the developer in this instance. Again, they have requested, we do have a 2% voucher credit ordinance already on the books. It has been on the books for some time, and they made a request to you all that, that they be considered for that. The way that voucher works is they will, they will pay all of the normal fees, impact fees, business license fees, plan review fees, all of those, all of those associated fees, they will pay on the front end, assuming they build the tower and it's given a certificate of occupancy and they begin to go into operation. They pay their taxes. They will submit a reimbursement request to us for up to 2% of the value of the construction, capped at $2 million. This will obviously be capped at $2 million. When this was originally proposed or presented to city council, you also asked that we restrict that even further to just general fund revenue, so they will not be reimbursed for any water and sewer impact fees, just business license, plan review, et cetera. And so that will cap out at $2 million. They have five years to collect that once they begin paying taxes on the property. The, the, the property taxes and additional revenue that we will collect from Ocean's 23 once it is stabilized is estimated to be $600,000 to $800,000 a year, once they become operational. And so by that math, if they were to collect or be reimbursed for the full $2 million, it would take us about two and a half years to re, to, to recoup that investment in the project. And again, we've seen delays, we've seen natural gas issues, we've seen cost escalation, which again is what has led them to, to make the request. Also, Mr. King and Mr. Daniels are also here if you have any questions for the owner.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table, please. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-49?
So moved.
Motion made from Mrs. Hatley, second from Mr. Louder. Any discussion or questions from council?
Brian, this, the incentives offered here today are not something new. This is something that's been going on for a period of time. And, uh, and the whole, her idea behind this, too, is to, you know, to attract people to come in, either to redevelop or develop new, new properties, correct?
Yes, sir. The, I believe, I believe the ordinance became official in 2019. We've had a number, the original intent, if you go back and look at those documents in 2019, was to revitalize Ocean Boulevard. If you knew what was in this spot prior to the new ownership, it was the, it was an older hotel that was demolished, and we have a new tower going in its place. So I would, I would offer that this is exactly what the ordinance intended to, to incentivize. I will mention, I did skip over this, and it is significant. In addition to the construction tower on the property itself, the owner, the owner is responsible for $4 million of improvements to the, the public right-of-way along 23rd Avenue. And I think that's, that's also significant to note.
I think you said this, but it is also important that if they do not develop this tower, the money that we are, we are actually rebating money there, paying it, and then we rebate it back.
Correct. It's completely reimbursed.
If they do not redevelop this tower, there won't be $650,000 in property tax revenue.
Correct.
There won't be any of the revenue that we're rebating back.
Correct.
And that's not equating hospitality tax and pay tax.
Correct. Yeah, it's completely, it's, it's set up to be a complete reimbursement. And again, even, even on this particular one, we have language here that they don't request their first voucher reimbursement until they pay their first property taxes. So it's actually a little bit more concrete, if you will.
Brian, if I'm not mistaken, this will probably be the, you know, you said $4 million in public improvements. The largest public improvement, or has there been any other?
I'd have to think about that. It's a significant, it will be a significant upgrade to 23rd Avenue corridor. I'm trying to think of a public improvement that might be close to that.
I just can't think of a project, $230 million.
Well, I can't think of another project of $230. So the, the private investment here is, is most definitely the, the largest private investment we've seen. Maybe Broadway at the Beach. I think inflation may have adjusted that number a little bit. But from a private development standpoint, I think that's accurate. I don't know of any other public improvements by private developers that would have gotten to $4 million, but like, I'm not as confident in that statement.
It's based on a percentage.
Right.
That's huge.
It is.
And again, it's all public, not just for their property.
Correct. Outside of the, outside of the private property.
I really wish we would have some more investors come in and try to do some of that on the south end, to get some of those properties either up to speed or, or torn down and a new property. Hopefully, the more the word gets out of incentives, we will be able to do that.
Well, stay tuned. I was, I turned around and looked for Chris Thompson. Chris was just asking me about my schedule tomorrow, because he has somebody coming into town to, to discuss a pretty grand plan for the south end that, and, and I...
The south end needs some love.
It, it does, but I, I would, I would, I would offer, I would offer this. Again, in the grand scheme of things, it's a $230 million development. The most they're going to get back here is less than 1%. The incentive, the incentive here is, is, is more a testament to us wanting them to be here. Us wanting them to be here is the incentive financially. I mean, the 1% here isn't going to, isn't going to swing the financials so, so dramatically. But I would tell you, the incentive for the south end is, and for all of Myrtle Beach, is this is Myrtle Beach. I mean, there, there is a value here in, in the destination. We've seen the destination on the uptick here for the last several years. We've seen the destination on the uptick here for the last several years. We anticipate that's going to continue. As that trend continues, we will see more and more interest in private development. We are seeing more and more interest in private development.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you, Brian.
Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. The second reading of ordinance 2025-50.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-50 to amend the City of Myrtle Beach Code of Ordinances to add Chapter 12, Article 7 relating to use of personal electric devices.
So this is second reading. There's been a couple of changes that have been made after first reading based on some of the feedback that we've gotten. And I'll highlight those real quick and then talk about the ordinance as a whole. There were some questions last meeting about crossing at intersections and crosswalks. That language has been cleaned up to be able to identify the areas that you can cross and it's at intersections as opposed to crosswalks. There were some language added in there. The operators of e-scooters have to follow all the, the laws of other motor vehicles, the ones that can apply. So riding with traffic, things like that. And then there was one more section that was added. Just clarifying where they can be operated because there were some questions about whether they could be operated in bike lanes, on roads with speed limits that are greater than 30 miles per hour. So that was just cleaned up as well. But really, to go back to the ordinance from the beginning, I think everybody in here knows, most of you have come to me at some point with concerns about the, the number of e-scooters and the danger to both the operators of the e-scooters and the motorists out there. And so this ordinance was crafted, the, one of the challenging parts was really defining what an e-scooter is. It's going to prohibit them from being used on roadways with the speed limits greater than 30 miles an hour. City property and public parks. It also talks about the operation of them, turn signals, and other required equipment. And one of the big things, I said it in the workshop hour too, but the J1 students, I know this is going to have an impact on the J1 students. I know Brian and I were actually at the, the J1 student housing when we were discussing this, and actually, they brought it up to us. They said, y'all need to do something about the e-scooters. And we said, funny thing, we're actually doing something about it. And, and so they were on board with this. Kathy Winfrey, who's also the coordinator of J1 students, and we've also talked to one of the largest employers of J1 students here in Myrtle Beach, and they are all for this ordinance. I'll tell you, at the, the J1 student housing, they were like, can y'all pass this today? And I said, well, we can't. But it, just the number of injuries in the students that they're taking to the hospital, so.
Thank you, Josh. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-50?
So moved.
Motion made from Mr. Chestnut, second from Mr. McClure. Any discussion or questions from council?
I think I voiced my opinion that I think this is a little overly restrictive, keeping them out, keeping the e-scooters out of bike lane, bike lanes on roads that are going, that are speed limits higher than 30 miles per hour. So if this does pass, I think we should keep an eye on that and, you know, be willing to say we made a mistake and change it if we, if it turns out that we did.
I agree with Greg. I'm wondering why we don't, you, you talk about guideline as they are operating a vehicle, but why are we not treating them more like a bicycle?
Some of it is with them riding in the roads. I, I see it and I hear it. Joe White's one of the big ones that even in the bike lanes, coming by cars, I'm just ignoring the car, especially turning right, and a lot of near collisions. And there have been some crashes even with them being in the bike lane. One of the questions that the mayor had asked me on the break was what some of the other cities in South Carolina are doing. I can tell you that the City of Columbia, any, there's just 25 miles an hour. It's not 30. There's just 25. Clemson did the same thing as far as 25 miles an hour. So as far as being restrictive, some of the other cities have gone even more restrictive, restrictive as far as the roads.
Well, I did feel more strongly about it that it was restrictive until yesterday. I was driving down Mr. Joe White and someone fell on their scooter right in front of me.
Yeah.
I, I do realize that there are a number of people in our community right now that ride these scooters back and forth to work. That's their first destination. And, and believe me, I've, I've had challenges with the young folks, especially on, on the highway where I live, on Highway 15, where I'm driving down the road and here comes a scooter head on to me in my lane. And so I, I, I think we've got to do something. This is, I mean, I don't know if this is perfect by any means, but it is a start. And what we just got to get across and what we have to help our folks that ride these things, that there are going to be laws, and you're going to have to abide by the laws, and you're going to have to be safe with them. Because so many times that, I don't know about the rest of you folks or not, but I've just seen too many times where they're not being safe. And so we have to take some steps to try to bring this in line.
To your point, I think the hardest part is not overly restricted mobility of, you know, folks that depend on them, but also trying to balance their safety, motorist safety, and, and trying to make all of that work. And to your point, being open-minded and, and seeing the impact. And, you know, if we need to come back and make changes, that we're willing to come back and make changes.
And I agree with that. You know, similar to what Greg said, this is not us trying to restrict anyone. But it's about public safety, and it's not just the safety of the people riding the scooters. It's the safety of the community that's out there. People, people walking in cars, on bikes. And we are allowed to amend things if needed. Any other questions from, from council? Thank you, Josh. Do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Yes.
Good morning. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Certainly. My name's Tom Witt. I am the chairman of the Bicycle, the City Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I live at 1855 Plantation Drive in Myrtle Beach, just outside the city limits, unfortunately. I'm here speaking on behalf of the committee today. After review of the proposed e-scooter ordinance, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee asked council to consider the following short-term and long-term considerations. In the short-term, as with any form of transportation, e-scooters can be two things. An affordable means of transportation for seasonal workers, J1 students, and service industry workers living in and near the city. However, as with many forms of transportation, they can be a hazard when operated carelessly. The committee fully recognizes that not everybody makes good decisions when they're riding these scooters. While the city has made terrific progress for alternative transportation infrastructure with bike lanes and multipurpose paths throughout the city, some areas, in particular 21st Avenue North and 29th Avenue North, lack safe accommodations for non-vehicle users. There are no bike lanes on either of those avenues or on Oak Street. The committee fully supports the ordinance, including and not limited to safe operation, single ridership, cell phone and device restrictions while driving, and light and reflective requirements as mentioned in the ordinance. The committee would like to see a helmet requirement added to the ordinance. Additionally, the committee is concerned that as written, the ordinance effectively excludes device, these personal like electric devices from 21st Avenue North, 29th Avenue North, and Oak Street because of the speed limit restriction. All three of those are prime corridors for hospitality workers, J1 students, tourists. The committee would like to propose the following. Ordnance is used to educate and promote that e-scooter users follow the same rules of the road as cyclists, in that they stay as far to the right as possible in traffic lanes and follow all traffic rules. Or Section 12-55 subsection A.1 be modified from 30 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. In the longer term, the committee looked extensively a couple of years ago at where vulnerable road users and service industry workers live within and close to the city, and subsequently proposed a capital improvement project that would add a bike, bike lanes to 21st Avenue North, thus creating a safe corridor for multimodal users. As you know, currently, there are no bike lanes on 21st Avenue North. The committee would also recommend that to resolve the long-term issues of multimodal transportation in the city, that the city adopt the CIP proposals for bike lanes on 21st Avenue, excuse me, work with appropriate state and local agencies and/or municipalities to address the traffic cones impeding safe traffic flow, deteriorating pavement, and irregular sidewalks on 29th Avenue North. So that's kind of the statement from the committee. I'd be happy to supply this to the council and to the clerk, and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Tom. And yes, you could please give it to the clerk.
My name's Buddy Stires. I live at 9775 Crane Drive, Myrtle Beach. I read the explanation of the ordinance. I don't see anything about mobile phones and whether or not same rules apply with driving a vehicle and a mobile phone. Because on the way from the council meeting last time, I saw a young man, 30 miles an hour, phone in one hand, steering with the other. So I just asked, is it same rules for a car or not?
Amy, would you like to come address that, please?
Mr. Stires, I thought you were going to come up here and tell us that you are an avid scooter rider.
I can't even run.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Stires made a good point there, and we, we did address that. It's in Section 12-155. Looks like it is subsection A.7, dresses mobile electronic devices, using them, holding them. And what we did there was, as you know, the state recently passed a hands-free law, and we borrowed liberally from that and, and made it applicable to personal electric devices in our ordinance.
Buddy, no, they cannot have a phone.
B7, sorry. B7 says, Mr. City Attorney.
And Amy, going back to Mr. Witt and the Bike and Ped Committee, the helmet requirement, are we even allowed to do that?
That's a good question. I think with bicycles, you might be able to. I'd have to look into that. I, I, is she here? I know when we talked about helmets, we don't, we don't have a requirement for bicycles to wear helmets, so we thought it would be odd to impose that requirement here.
I just think it would be fair of us, since the Bike and Ped Committee made some recommendations, that even if we pass this today, that we, we go back and we consider those recommendations and look at them.
Sure, we can absolutely study that.
Okay, thank you. So if we did take their recommendations specifically, I like the recommendations regarding bike lane. I know that's a big project, but makes sense because so many people are traveling that way. And improvements on 29th as well. Would that then, if there's a bike lane, even if it's more than 30 miles an hour, could they travel on that road?
Not on, not on an e-scooter. They can use, they, they can use a bicycle there now, whether there's a bike lane or not. But they, if this ordinance would not allow, if the road is 30 miles per hour, greater use in the bike lane.
Greater than 30, not 30 or greater, correct?
What did I say?
You said 30 or greater.
Okay, greater than 30. Yes, correct.
Yeah, that bothers me.
So if we just change the speed limit, then they can-
Or you, well, that would be, it would be a bigger change to change the ordinance to allow e-scooters or other personal electric, electric devices in, on roads that have bike lanes, if they're ridden in the bike lane. I'm not sure if that, is that the, that's what Councilwoman Connor is thinking.
Why would we not allow them to be in a bike lane? And we want them not to be on a sidewalk and not to be in a bike lane?
I know there were, there are particular roads that have bike lanes where these devices have been problematic. And so that was part of the issue.
I'd be interested in what Mr. Witt thinks about that, too, as a bicyclist. And Chief is coming up, and this may not be a perfect ordinance, because this is something new that we've had, we've never had to deal with this before. So as we stated, there may be some changes, amendments that need to be made to this as we go along and see how it works and what needs to be tweaked. Chief, give us your input, please.
Just reiterating what was gone over in the workshop, was that was what the response was in reference to why we decided on 30 miles an hour, why that was put forward, was because of where the traffic collisions were occurring, where the problems and the complaints were coming in from. Thank you.
Bike lane, Mr. Witt.
Chief, I need to ask one question there, please.
Chief, you want the chief?
Okay, be, Josh can answer this question, I think, and Chief. But other than in residential neighborhoods, except for Ocean Boulevard, and except for a short area of Highway 17, that I'm aware of, all the other streets in the city that are outside of the neighborhood that speed limit is 35. Is that correct?
I believe almost all the major thoroughfares are over, oh, Mia.
So I, I go back to my question from, first time we talked about this ordinance. And a person that lives on, on 35th Avenue North and Oak Street, and they work at the Family Kingdom, and they're going, and they're using a scooter for transportation, then how do they get to work?
I think it's going to be challenging, if at all possible, to be able to get from, from that, you know, from where you described to Family Kingdom. I think the other issue is, when you start talking about speed limits, I mean, obviously, I mean, you know, with your background, the greater the speed of the vehicles that go and they collide with a scooter, the worse the outcome's going to be. And so, I mean, at some point-
No, I, I do understand that. But I just go back to the fact that I think that we maybe need to take a look at this. Mr. Chestnut said we reduce the speed limit in streets other than like Highway 17, or we end up raising the speed limits. Because there, again, you got a lot of, lot of areas that, that folks who may be riding needs to go to work, you're not going to be able to travel on those roads because the speed limit is greater than 30, correct?
Correct. And I think the challenge is going to be if we do go with 35 or we go with 40, are we going to have an impact on safety? It would probably be where we're at right now today, to a large extent.
There's something that we need to have discussion about.
I think to get from 35th Avenue and Oak Street to the Family Kingdom, because we changed that you can cross at any intersection, so you wouldn't be able to go down Oak Street, you wouldn't be able to go down Kings Highway, but you, you would have to go directly across Kings Highway, 35th Avenue, down to Ocean Boulevard, and then take Ocean Boulevard the rest of the way. And that, that works at 35th Avenue. It doesn't work everywhere, but I think that, that change of the- of the intersection made it a little bit easier to get around, but there still are going to be some challenges.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else from council?
I just wanted to hear from...
Did you have something else?
Mr. Vit.
Just to make sure I answer correctly, would you mind repeating your question, Devin?
Your thought on these devices being in bike lanes?
In the sense that they provide a safe corridor for alternative transportation. I'm going to speak for myself here. I don't see that as a problem. I mean, bike, seasoned cyclists, experienced cyclists can deal with people traveling in the appropriate direction. Where cyclists get squirrely is when I'm traveling with traffic, as I'm supposed to do, and somebody is traveling against traffic, as they're not supposed to do. Then that, I mean, that becomes an issue. I mean, but that, that happens when two riders encounter each other going, one of them going the wrong way. So, in the sense that it's the safest place for them to be, I don't think any true cyclist would have a problem with the scooters in the bike lane, as long as they're behaving appropriately, obeying the rules of the road, traveling in the appropriate direction, and not have their earphones in and watching their phone.
And truth is, there are a number of times where cyclists are not traveling in the same direction to traffic as well.
I wish I could educate everybody on the spot, Mr. Louder, but that, that's a challenge sometimes.
I'd like to ask Josh and Amy, if we can look, I know we did some research on what other cities have done, but if there are examples of other cities allowing these in the bike lanes?
We, this does allow them in the bike lanes. Are y'all trying to keep them out of the bike lanes?
So, it does not, so the way it is written right now, it does not allow them in bike lanes on roads where the speed limit's greater than 30 miles an hour, like Joe White, for example, where the speed limit's 40.
But if the speed limit is 30 or lower, and there are bike lanes, it provides that they should be in them.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. To your question, Mayor, yes, we can look at other states.
Thank you.
If I may, council, I did attend a Neighborhood Watch meeting a couple of weeks ago at the Train Depot for neighborhoods, I guess basically in the downtown area, and one of the concerns was beyond e-scooters, for lack of a better term, motorized wheelchairs in the bike lane. People, residents were concerned that because the wheelchairs were wider than the bike lane, they were creating safety hazards. Now, I mean, like I said, people make decisions all the time that may or may not be in their long-term best interest, but I, I think we have to be careful in legislating who can be in what bike lanes, when and where. And, you know, if you can be in a bike lane less than 30, why can't you be in a bike lane when it's 35? I mean, a bike lane is a bike lane, is a bike lane, and should be treated as such throughout the city, and provide safe, a safe corridor for the appropriate user.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor, council, staff, Mark McBride, 5807, House School Circle. When have y'all reached out to the business license owners that are in this industry, the people that sell these and rent them, and where was their input into this discussion? They're not allowed to be rented in the city.
They're not renting them, as far as I'm aware.
There's no way they're renting these?
Maybe they're not, maybe not renting it correctly, but there are people in business in the city renting these. I'm glad that y'all talked to the J1 students, you know, they have work visas, they're not citizens in this discussion, second reading, and y'all haven't even reached out to the people who sell that. This is their livelihood, business license owners. Mayor, he said that you ask about other cities, now you're asking. I would just ask y'all to continue this. Mr. Smith, thank you for saying this is over restrictive. I don't know what the answer is. I agree, there's a safety issue. You know, since this brought up, and I saw it the other night, you know, you can go to Charlotte, and you can buy scooters with two electric engines, with all these fancy stuff that go 62 miles an hour. If you do that, I'm not sure that's real bright, but I would just ask you to continue it, not just do something to do it today, and bring in the other people in the city that are in this business. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I think it's our responsibility for public safety, to keep our public safe. And that's what this is trying to do.
And as you pointed out, we can always amend this.
Absolutely. Is there any other public comment? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We appreciate everyone's input and feedback. Thank you very much, and we will take all of that into consideration. Thank you. First reading of ordinance 2025-32.
First reading of ordinance 2025-32, an ordinance to amend Section 12-80, and to repeal Section 12-150.12 of Chapter 12 of the Myrtle Beach Code of Ordinances.
All right, this is an ordinance that has been before you, once before, it was continued at that time, we were asked to bring it back, so we have done that. I can go through and hit the highlights and then answer any questions.
Please.
This ordinance makes several amendments to Chapter 12 of the city code concerning parking policies and procedures. The city code generally allows the manager to create public parking policies only when approved by a city council. The proposed ordinance would amend Chapter 12 in certain respects. One would amend, amend Chapter 12 to allow the manager to declare a temporary parking holiday, so to speak, to suspend paid or metered parking enforcement for up to 90 days per calendar year without the need for further council action. The amendment would require the manager to notify council of the temporary suspension and provide an estimated economic impact. This point in particular was something that downtown businesses have expressed an interest in, and so I know council is interested in looking at it. From that perspective, the manager would also be allowed to place appropriate signage restricting parking at lots and garages without further council approval, and that would subject violators of these restrictions to towing or ticketing. We see a problem sometimes with some of the city lots, surprisingly even the police department lot, a car may stay there overnight. This would allow the manager to post signs to prohibit overnight parking, or require you to be conducting business on the city property while you're parking in some of these lots. The manager also would be permitted, in the amendment in Section 12-8B, to create and administer an employee parking decal program for full-time city employees, and the manager has spoken during the workshop about the parameters of that. And then the last amendment is just essentially to clean up a section that is obsolete, that address, that, it looks like it was adopted in 2016 to address issues with parking and the right-of-way along Ocean Boulevard, but there have been changes made to Ocean Boulevard that we don't, we don't require that section anymore.
All right, thank you. Let's get a motion on the table for discussion. Now, please have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-32.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made from Mr. Smith, second from Mr. Chestnut. Any discussion from council?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, I would like to offer up an amendment on the section about the 90-day calendar year. I would like to amend it to the, there'll be no parking in downtown area from October till February.
And I think that's what we discussed in workshop, before you got here, changing it to 120 days. Are you good with that change?
Okay, so we're going to change it from...
There a second for that amendment?
Second.
Do we do in 120, or are we doing November to...
October to October. My request for an amendment is from October to February.
October 1st?
October 1st to February 1st.
Or February 28th?
28.
End of February?
End of February, February 28th.
All right, so from October 1st...
February 28th.
February 28th, except during a leap year, we'll go to the 29th.
And where was that area again, Mr.?
In this area.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Louder's amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from council on the amendment?
Yeah, I would say that that doesn't leave any wiggle room. At the workshop, we talked about giving the manager a longer period that he was able to handle it, whether or not it was, determining whether it was appropriate. With this amendment, it restricts, it gives him no leeway to do anything. And that may be what you're after, but I just want to point that out.
I don't know that the 120, when you do a 120 per calendar year, if that's going to cover, you'd be shy, probably about 20 days or something, if my math is correct. And I'm not always sure about that, but anyway.
Well, maybe we can make it 150.
Yeah, but, you know, I think it's extremely important that we make it where these areas, that people can visit these areas, whether they're locals, whether they're visitors or whatever. We need to give our business owners in this area the most leeway possible, because times are hard. Times are hard, and we need to help them out any way we can. And this is just one way to do it.
And I think having specific dates on the calendar is also helpful for people in knowing, hey, 1st of October, we can, hopefully, some of our county, more of our county residents will even be coming down to visit our businesses in this area.
Could I ask a question, just so when we make the amendment?
Please.
Assuming the motion passes, are you proposing that the ordinance read that there would be no paid parking in a specific area from October 1st through the end of February? Or are you proposing that the manager have the authority to suspend parking for that time period, just for clarity?
The ordinance will read that from October 1st to February 28th.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
Is the area of the suspended paid parking specified, would we define that?
No.
I would say in the downtown area.
But how are you going to define that?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, before we were giving the manager the authority to define the area?
We do the core, which is what we define, 6th North to 21st North, 6th South, I'm sorry, the 21st area, 21st North is how we define the core. I don't know if that's what you have in mind?
My whole thought is not necessarily the convention center, I'm thinking about from 21st Avenue North to 3rd Avenue South, or whatever it is, that area there.
I think, what'd you say, Brian, 6th Avenue South?
6th South to 21st North.
South.
I know, I know we need to carve the convention center out with that, but I didn't...
Well, we need to state in the amendment what we want.
Convention Center is going to be...
Let me just try to restate that amendment again, then.
The convention center is really going to be north of that 21st.
Yes.
So, I wouldn't be concerned about it.
From October, October 1st till February 28th, from 21st Avenue North to 6th Avenue South.
Does that get you what you need, Amy and Will?
Yes, Mrs. Hatley, is your second to that motion?
Yes. That's my second also.
Okay. And again, I'll ask if there's any discussion from council.
I have, I'm going to ask, we talked about this in the, in the first session. Amy, again, the, on issuing the decal...
Yes, sir.
That portion of this to full-time employees of the city. If I understood it correctly, currently, and I call them buckets, right? Currently, we have two buckets, right? Now, we're creating a third bucket.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
To get around the other two buckets.
In addition to the other two.
In addition.
Yeah.
Or get around, okay. We also had the discussion about our taxpayers, right? They qualify for these decals because they are our taxpayers, and many of our employees, maybe, Fox, maybe you could school me on this, maybe the majority of them do not live in the city limits. Would that be a fair statement?
I think that'd be fair.
Okay. And from what I think, a lot of them even live further west of Conway, so I'm not even sure that doing this, that that many of our employees would actually take advantage of this. And the fact that our residents do pay taxes to qualify for this, it concerns me that we're doing this. I would prefer that we remove this part of the ordinance. I don't think it's fair to our taxpayers.
Mr. McClure?
The wheel of council.
Let's, let's deal with one amendment...
Yeah.
At a time.
Okay.
So, if this, if this motion passes, and you wish to make another amendment, that's fine, but let's, let's get a vote on the present amendment that's on the table.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I appreciate that you did.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to amend it from October 1st through February, end of February, from 21st Avenue North to 6th Avenue South. And I'll ask the city attorney, do we need to specify how far west?
Specify what?
How far west.
Is it all city paid parking?
We don't have paid parking west of Kings Highway.
Okay.
Currently.
Okay, we've heard from council, is there any discussion from the public on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please specify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there another amendment to be made?
I had asked that we remove from the ordinance the decal provision.
The employee decal?
Employee decal provision.
Okay, Mr. McClure is asked to make another amendment to remove the employee decal. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Louder. Any discussion from council?
Yeah, I would say that the city residents are afforded the opportunity to have a parking sticker by way of being city residents and paying city taxes. The city employees, it follows in my mind that they could be afforded the ability to have a city parking sticker by way of being a city employee, and being an important part of our operations. You know, there may be employees that do work, come in on emergency basis, are called in there, and these are, besides just being able to park in the, in the parking meters, they may be doing city business in their personal vehicles, not have a parking sticker and get a parking ticket. city business in their personal vehicles, not have a parking sticker and get a parking ticket. It just, it seems reasonable to me that city employees could get a sticker to park. And it also seems reasonable to me that the city manager could make the rules regarding that without council making the, you know, I think my, my view of council is set the direction, not the details. And oftentimes, we wanna set the details, but I think that this is setting the direction, authorizing the city manager to do this as a enticement to be a city employee, as a, another benefit to being a city employee. And I think it's very reasonable and will have virtually no impact on parking or city finances.
And Fox, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the city employee portion of this is only valid in parking meters and at the convention center?
That is correct.
No where else, correct?
Same core center that we just talked about in the First Amendment.
Okay.
No meters and no, nothing in the avenues.
So no street ends?
No street ends.
No.
6th South, the core, the core section and the convention center.
Gotcha.
And it's only for five months now, I guess, because with the First Amendment went from October 1st to February 28th. It'd be from March 1st to September 30th, where it'd be eligible, or applicable, or whatever the word is.
Anything else from council? Any discussion from the public on the Second Amendment? Yes, Ms. Riecking?
The way I understood this amendment, it sounds to me like you have strayed away from the original purpose. And that is what, to boost the businesses, right? That's what it's supposed to be. And most of the discussions are just talking about the decals for the residents, the decals for the city employees.
No ma'am.
No.
No ma'am.
So how, how does this work? Please explain.
Ma'am, my amendment was to do away with park, to pay parking from October 1st to February 28th, from 21st Avenue North to 6th Avenue South. So there will be no paid parking during that time. That does help the downtown.
It does, so in my mind, if we are truly going to help the businesses downtown, then why don't we just do away with the decals and just make it free, right? Make it really simple so that everybody, even, even the ones from out of town, can come in and shop. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? All those in favor of the Second Amendment, please specify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
What was it?
All those opposed, say nay, raise your hand.
Nay.
Second Amendment fails. We will vote on the amended first reading of ordinance 2025-32, which will include changing the dates from October 1st to February 28th. All those in favor of the amended ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I have not asked, and I apologize to council, does anybody need a 10-minute break? Sometimes I forget how long we've been up here. Does anyone need a break or keep going? Need a break?
Let's go.
Need a break? Okay. Y'all are fine or need a break? Everybody's good? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the first reading of ordinance 2025-52.
First reading, Daddy. I am recusing myself from this item since I'm a member of First Methodist Church, Myrtle Beach.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance 2025-52, approving the execution and delivery by the city of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, of a parking lot license agreement between the city and First Methodist Church of Myrtle Beach with respect to the parking lot along 9th Avenue North in the city of Myrtle Beach.
Thank you. Wanted to give you a little bit of backstory, just to lead into this conversation. Some time ago, casual conversations with some representatives from the church, they acknowledged the work in the A&amp;I district in general. They were also dealing with an older building that was deteriorating. They were also dealing with additional parking demands themselves. And so we initiated a conversation even then about a prospective partnership between the city and the church on increasing parking downtown. And they have since gone through, demolished the building, constructed the new parking lot, and we've continued to hash through the details. The details in this case turned out to be, challenging may not be the right word, but we, we, there was a lot of details going back and forth. And this is something that had not been done before. And obviously, doing something for the first time als, always requires a lot of conversation. I can feel some of the church representatives nodding their heads behind me. Lots of back and forth, but just, just to frame the conversation again, church owns a piece of property on 9th Avenue. They have constructed a parking lot there with 60 spaces. We have, we are proposing to you today a partnership between the city and the church whereby we reserve 40 parking places of the 60 for the general public, not paid, because that adds a whole different layer of complexity. So free parking for 40 of the 60 spots, primarily when not being used by the church. So obviously, the church's greatest demand is on Sundays. Otherwise, the property would be fairly well underutilized. And they have invested to date about, over, I think, over $300,000, I know, not counting the land. The proposal in front of you today assumes that we would, we would partner with the church for a one-time payment of $150,000. Excuse me. Original conversations, we were gonna, we were gonna participate at 50%. Obviously, they, they now have put in more than $300,000. Lot of complexity here about shared responsibility, shared use, shared maintenance. And that's where a lot of the detailed conversations have happened. I think we feel comfortable now. We are responsible for the lot when the church is not using it. When the church uses it, obviously, if damage is caused and we can identify that, then they would be responsible for any damages. We both have rights to enforce, we both have rights to, to essentially manage, manage, manage the parking of the facility. That's, that's most of the, that's most of the high level. Happy to go through any detailed questions or conversations. I know there are representatives from the church here also.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table, please. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-52?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Louder, second from Mr. Chestnut. Any discussion from council?
Yes, ma'am. Thinking about Sunday mornings, and we're operating a parking lot on Saturday evening, 40 spaces.
Yes, sir.
Correct? What about vehicles that fail to leave the parking lot by the time church service starts, then they may need those parking spaces?
Well, there's a mechanism in here where both of us have the ability to enforce and to tow, which is what we would do. In the moment, we would figure that out. We would figure out after the fact who's responsible for that car being there at that time and handle the financials accordingly. But we've tried to, we've, that line of question, whether it's towing or whether it's insurance responsibility or damages, has really been, been the crux of us trying to figure out how to navigate the relationship. Because it is, it's not black and white. It's gonna have to be a good faith partnership between the city and the church. But as it stands right now, the, the agreement has a mechanism where either of us can tow if it's, if there's a car there when it's not supposed to be there.
So you said it's gonna have to be a good faith partnership. And something like this, we haven't really done before. So if it turns out that the church is unhappy with the way it's going, do they have an out?
We both, we both have outs. I mean, the, the agreement can be terminated on 30 days' notice. The 150,000, we pay them, they owe us a pro rata, pro rata share of whatever that balance is at the time the, the agreement is terminated.
So the risk is really 30 days?
Correct.
Brian, today, we, this is the second public-private partnership that we're talking about. Is it unusual for a city to enter into a public-private partnership?
No ma'am, not at all. I would add, this one probably has a different layer of complexity than some. But no, this is candidly, this, I would argue that for us to see the change in the city, specifically downtown, that we all envision, this will be the first of a number of public-private partnerships. And all of them are gonna look very different than each of the, each of the previous ones. We're gonna have to be creative, we're gonna have to be innovative as we continue to pursue this. I mean, again, the, the option, except for this agreement, would be that we go acquire another piece of land. We fund solely the construction of a new parking lot. And then we have an underutil, underutilized parking lot in one area and another, more expensive parking lot in another area. It just seems that when we would need the parking lot, the church doesn't necessarily need the parking lot and vice versa. It seems like it could be a, a good fit. But not, not simple.
Would it be fair to say that these public-private partnerships are also more economical?
Absolutely.
And savings for our residents as far as taxes are concerned for investments?
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully a benefit to both parties.
Correct. And I think the way we have it now, it's structured as mutually beneficial, not just for the city, but for the visitors that want to come down to the city. And we, we have quickly developed a parking problem downtown.
Which is not a bad thing.
It's not a bad thing.
I mean, other businesses down there will be happy.
We've had that problem for a long time. But just for clarity, what days, the city, how are we gonna use this and what happens with special events? A Saturday as an example, right? And now we have a marriage and they're gonna use that parking lot. How do we navigate that, for lack of a better description?
For, for marriage, so, so marriage in particular, that, that one's easier because that's planned further in advance. We've actually had more conversations about what happens in the event of a funeral and a special event downtown. That, I mean, generally, you have less than a week's notice in that case. And we may already have an event scheduled downtown. I mean, the, the default would be if we have an event downtown on a Saturday and we also then have a funeral on a Saturday, the church would then use that parking lot for their purpose, recognizing again that, that, that need is still gonna be a couple hours out of the Saturday versus the whole day. So there's gonna be a lot of communication between our special events folks and, and the church folks to sort of navigate the individual instances.
And then we, in coordination with the church, using the, God forbid, the funeral scenario, obviously, you would wanna put up some kind of signage because the average person is not gonna know.
And we, we, again, we, we've talked through that. The church already has some special event signage, sandwich boards that they'll place in the, in the front of the parking lot to make folks aware that on a certain day, this is, is reserved for, for a special event.
Got it, thank you.
We don't have individual funerals and weddings and, but, but we have some, they have some special event sandwich boards that they, they have already created.
Funeral homes have some signage.
Yes, they do.
Any other questions from council?
I'm, I'm assuming that we're entered into this agreement that the folks at the First Methodist Church are all on board?
I can't speak for all, but the trustees are on board.
Yeah, like any, I don't know of a church where everybody.
We're getting a two thumbs up over here.
Well, let me just say, the majority, the majority of, of the folks are, are in agreement with what's taking place.
Yeah, I do know this has been a subject of conversation amongst the congregation for a while and here today because I think they are comfortable with the position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the public?
Mayor and council, I would ask y'all to leave the church, be the church. Let their parking lot be their parking lot. They didn't decide to go down there and the city to take over and go into the private business and become real estate agents and property managers. How can you be at this point, eight years into this process of the Arts and Innovation District, and not have enough parking for the buildings on 9th Avenue? When you look at the Acquire HTC Center going west, there's 5,000 square feet. That could be two more individual businesses, that could be another windows, that could be another tasting room. So that's two more businesses. And then west of that is another 5,000 square feet, there could be two more. So you could have four tenants down there. And y'all are the ones who decided to be in the business. He repeatedly said, this isn't normal. This has taken things, it's gonna be communications. Well, when people start communicating, there's all kinds of problems. Churches opening themselves up to liabilities and lawsuits because of the people coming over those buildings when the city's there. And when everything turns, everything turns ugly and all the communication falls apart when attorneys gets involved and people get sued. I just ask you to figure out your own parking and leave the church, be the church, and let them control their own parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McBride, does it elude you that the church leadership is here and they're in agreement? They weren't forced to do it? Does it elude you? Where, what's the problem with that? I, I must be missing something.
I said, leave the church, be the church, and don't worry about their parking space. Figure out your own parking. They don't need parking, they have their parking. The only reason this is here is because y'all need to have to go to them and you're trying to figure out how to get onto their property. Leave them be their own parking.
But that's not correct. That's not how the discussion started. I mean, you're just assuming things that aren't in fact.
I'm not assuming anything. It's their private property, it's their parking. Leave them have their own private parking and don't worry about their parking.
Have they communicated to you that somehow the city is inducing them and enticing them to do this? That they haven't done it with their own free will?
Mr. McClure, you can say what you want. That's my feelings and I made my point clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we do have representatives from the church here, would you like to make any comments? Since we did get two thumbs up?
Yes, my name is Randy Wallace and a citizen of Myrtle Beach, 40, 402 40th Avenue, as well as First Methodist Church. And we did want the parking. We wanted to get rid of an old building. And we had, even before we started that, started discussions with the city. And they were productive, but we decided, when the city, you know, has a lot more going on downtown than, than we in one individual, we decided we would go ahead and pursue the work and get the work done. One, because we felt like we could do it a lot less expensive, a little less red tape and a little less processing, although it's still a process with the church as well do. But we were able to get it done for a lot less money than we had firstly anticipated. It did end up costing us over $300,000, but we had already discussed, you know, with the city representatives, talking about, you know, estimated $300,000. And that's why we came up with the $150,000 figure and we decided to leave that there. We ended up spending about $360,000 or $370,000, somewhere in that amount. But we're, you know, a, a part of downtown and we've always had good communication with the city about what's, the city is doing, what the church is doing, sharing those ideas. And we were, you know, thankful to, that we, for all that the city is doing downtown and the improvements there, and we feel like that benefits the church as well. And we wanted to, we needed the parking, but just, you know, we understand also that we don't need to use that parking most of the time. So we did look at it and we approached the city back. After we decided to move ahead, we came back to the. we came back to the city and said, we would like to continue discussions and pursue the joint use agreement of some type. And so that was our directive, to come to the city and say, let's enter into those discussions again. We're going to go ahead and finish it irregardless. But we do want to pursue that, and it's a benefit to the church, obviously, gives us more money to do more of the Lord's work, and it benefits the city because it provides parking for most of the times. And it has, what Brian didn't mention is that, you know, we've basically been doing this since April, I think we finished about April. So we finished the summer, we finished the spring season, we finished a special event, and we operated basically with those things in mind that are in the agreement, and it worked well. So we have no complaints, and it satisfied the questions of our, you know, just like here, in the public, you know, you have different opinions, but we have people that were concerned about some of the same things y'all are asking about, how do you do the signage? And we've kind of worked through that. So we had a good experience, and we're happy with it, and we hope you vote in favor of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Let's get Dr. Connor back in the room. We're going to take a 10-minute break. please.
Okay, we have a request from Michelle Schumpert, our CFO, to move an agenda item that we will need her for to do that next, and that is 2025-67. And then immediately following, we will do the first reading of ordinance 2025-53. I will ask for a motion to suspend the rules to make that change.
So move.
Motion from Mr. Louder, second from Mr. McClure. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. So we will move on to motion 2025-67.
Motion 2025-67 to allocate up to $28 million, $400,000, to fund PDL improvements at the Pelicans Baseball Stadium, $14 million, provide additional funding for Phase II of the 48-inch waterline extension, $8.4 million, and to fund an upgrade of public safety radio system infrastructure, $6 million. Hospitality tax revenues sufficient to pay for the baseball stadium PDL improvements and the extension of the 48-inch waterline will be transferred to the baseball stadium and water and sewer funds. Hospitality fee revenue of $3 million and local accommodations tax revenue of $3 million will be transferred to the capital improvements fund to defray the cost of the radio upgrade.
Thank you, council. This is the same motion that I discussed with you at workshop last week, our recommendation to use some of the fund balance from the hospitality tax, hospitality fee, and the local accommodations tax to pay for certain projects that are in our plan or necessary with these cash funds rather than issuing debt. We estimate that we're going to have almost $60 million in fund balance between those three funds at June 30, 2025. Therefore, we recommend we use $28.4 million to fund the $14 million for PDL improvements, $8.4 million for waterline expansion, the final phase of Phase II, and $6 million for the radio upgrade for public safety.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Smith, second from Mr. Chestnut. Any discussion or questions from council?
Yes, ma'am. Michelle, when the motion passes, then we take this money out of the fund balance. What does that leave us as far as that percentage that we want to keep in the fund balance?
Right. So in the local accommodations tax, that leaves us with 144% of recurring expenditures for 2025 means our fund balance would cover it 1.4x. For the hospitality tax, for FY '25, if we compared it to the FY '25 expenditures, it would mean that the existing fund balance left afterwards would cover 57% of the normal expenditures in that fund. And for the hospitality fee, at June 30, 2025, if we spend that money, we would be at about 75% of recurring expenditures. When you think about that, and you think about our general fund, and the level of funding that we try to maintain as unassigned fund balance in the general fund, we recommend at least 25%. So I think that demonstrates that these funds are well in excess of that. Now, yes, they are more susceptible to the economy, but these fund balances also reflect that, you know, that threat.
Thank you.
And those are percentages before any new money goes into those funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle, that $14 million that we're transferring to the baseball stadium fund to do the PDL improvements, that'll be combined with the $6 million that came from the county.
That is correct.
Is that correct? And that makes $20 million, which is what our commitment to the baseball stadium PDL improvements was, right?
That is correct.
So we were planning on issuing up to $14 million in debt, and using the baseball stadium lease revenues to mostly pay for that debt. Is that correct?
Correct.
So now we won't have any debt, but we will still have baseball stadium lease revenues. Is that correct?
That is right.
So where will that money go?
Well, that money will stay in the baseball stadium fund. It will, we won't have the need to subsidize the operations of the fund, at least not in the next few years. What money accumulates there will also help offset any future capital costs that we have. And remember that not only will we have the $8.50 annual lease, there's also going to be a component that's going to come to us as a per-ticket fee for capital. So what the hope is, is between the lease accumulating there and then the capital contributions, that there will be much less need for subsidy going forward in that baseball fund.
So it's likely that the baseball stadium will continue to be debt-free?
That is absolutely the goal.
And the $8.4 million for the water extension, we've already issued some debt for the water, for one phase of it, but this will be just in it, instead of issuing more debt. So we will pay cash for this part.
That's right. I believe the first phase of this water line was 11 or 12 million. But cost, you know, when Ann went over her presentation a little bit earlier today, she talked about copper. When you think about this, these are pipes that are going in the ground, 48-inch pipes. We've seen just extreme escalation in that cost. Fortunately, we have this cash to be able to fund it without increasing the debt for this particular phase, at least.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Michelle, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to put you on the spot, because a lot of times you talk to us about the reasons why we use debt to spread out the life of the project for the users. Why, in this case, is it smarter for us to not use that type of debt and to use the fund balance for these projects?
Well, first off, we have the money. We don't always have the money to fund...
That's right. I believe the first phase of this water line was 11 or 12 million. But cost, you know, when Ann went over her presentation a little bit earlier today, she talked about copper. When you think about this, these are pipes that are going in the ground, 48-inch pipes. We've seen just extreme escalation in that cost. Fortunately, we have this cash to be able to fund it without increasing the debt for this particular phase at least.
Excellent. Thank you.
Michelle, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to put you on the spot because a lot of times you talk to us about the reasons why we use debt to spread out the life of the project for the users. Why in this case is it smarter for us to not use that type of debt and to use the fund balance for these projects? Well, first off, we have the money. We don't always have the money to fund an asset or infrastructure upfront. If, most of the time, if we wait to have the money, it's going to take a very long time to save the money to do it. In that case, the people who are the existing taxpayers while you're saving the money are the ones who pay for it but won't be utilizing it to the extent that those who get the benefit of it from years on out. So you don't have that generational equity. One of the reasons I really like recommending the use of hospitality tax for the water line is the water and sewer infrastructure is not something we often get to use that tourism tax for. We don't often get to use, utilize that revenue to offset the cost of what the tourists are actually driving in our funds. But the way that the law is written, I can use it for this particular asset, so it only makes sense to do that. And then again, for public safety, these will be radios, okay? I wouldn't want to issue debt for these radios because their life is not going to be as long as you would to issue debt. We could lease them, but the cost to lease is more than I really want to see us pay when we can just pay cash. Thank you. You're welcome.
Michelle, also going back, you know, we talk about the necessary maintenance for the stadium and, you know, all along the time to where we got to this deal, people were throwing those numbers out. But isn't it true that regardless, we're always going to have these maintenance costs because that's part of our responsibility?
That's correct. As long as we keep that stadium open and operational regardless of who occupies it, we will have these maintenance costs. Any other questions from counsel?
Why are we in a position that we are able to do this?
Well, really, like so many other governments, the just massive amount of spending that occurred right as the pandemic was easing, when, you know, people could begin to travel, that is really what's done it. Our travel numbers for tourism, the hospitality fee, hospitality tax, TDF, they jumped 30%, 40% in like one year. And then it had another year had growth over that. It was an anomaly. It was almost like the housing bubble, if you think of it. And I don't think anybody really foresaw that it would jump that high. And then you add to that the inflation that we've seen. So inflation has actually kept those numbers up higher much longer than we anticipated. You know, it was kind of like the housing bubble when some of you were here and Mike Shelton was talking about, you don't budget to the bubble. You know, you keep your operating and recurring expenses at a level that you feel secure you're going to continuously receive because you feel like at some point those highs are going to have to come down. That is exactly how we budgeted and we budgeted to utilize these funds through that period. By doing that, it has allowed us to accumulate a very decent fund balance that we can now use to pay for projects without utilizing debt.
Sound budgeting practices.
Yes, sir. Thank you, counsel, for those sound budgeting practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. You need to come forward, please.
Just for the record, I want you all to know that I'm against this project from the very first time I've heard of it. It seems like it's common sense. If Ori County does not want to have any part of it anymore, why would the city shoulder the burden of this expense? It's huge. And now we're being asked to use our funds so we don't owe anything? Well, the truth is, we do, right? The first phase, we owe that. And it's already going to be a debt that I don't know how many years that would be, what, 10 years, 20, 30 years? Because we keep recycling this debt. So, and then the people that did the budgeting, it seems to me that if they're smart, they would have allowed the inflation right away so we don't have to keep coming back for more funds. That's all I was going to say.
I know you need to go, Michelle. How many years has the City of Myrtle Beach received an award for excellence in financial planning? Well, financial reporting, and I believe it's been 37 years. 37 years. And you've told us we're in the strongest financial position that we've ever been in? Yes. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
We'll now go back to 2025-67.
53?
No, 53. 2025, first reading of ordinance 2025-53.
First reading of ordinance 2025-53, amending the business license ordinance of the City of Myrtle Beach to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020.
Thank you. So why are we making this change? I came before y'all two years ago. We have to do this every odd year. So that was 2023, last time I was here. It's 2025. So now we have to do it again. We'll do it again in '27. We'll do it again in '29. And we'll do it again in '31 until we don't have to do it anymore, which I don't really know when that is. So per Business License Standardization Act, as you said, Act 176, South Carolina Code Section 61400G1 says basically this, "A new class schedule must be adopted on every odd year." So that's what we're doing. Effective 5/1/2026, the City of Myrtle Beach will be adopting the latest NAICS class schedule. If you don't know what a NAICS is, that's the North American Industry Classification System. That is how you basically classify all businesses, short-term rental, long-term rental, bars, restaurants, grocery stores. They all have a number associated with them. This change in the NAICS class schedule will have no impact on our current business license rates. You folks are the only ones that set those rates, not state. This adoption of class schedule is not optional. It is state law per Act 176. The class schedule, change my page here. Updates derived from the latest statistical data on business profitability studies from the IRS, which then receives approval from the South Carolina Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. So what IRS does is they look at data year over year, and they make these changes to code, and they send that to all the state governments. And that's where we get this information from. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Mr. Smith, second from Dr. Connor. Any discussion from counsel?
This is required by state law that we approve this?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. First reading of ordinance 2025-54.
First reading of ordinance 2025-54 to amend Section 2-242D, Section 2-243A, B and C, Section 2-246I and VI, and Section 2-253 of the Myrtle Beach Code of Ordnances relating to purchasing.
Thank you. As we spoke about in workshop, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. I know everybody's tired. Ann and I proposed some new changes to our current procurement ordinance. And the reason for those are this, you know, we talked about inflation. We've talked about rising costs in services and materials. And what we wanted to do is look at our old thresholds that we have currently and see if we can adopt some new ones. Along with that, we also are going to have an online system so we can do our online solicitations. And we'll be rolling that out in about, I think it was 45 to 60 days. So I'll let Ann take it from here.
I mean business this time. We're not going to choke on procurement.
Oh, come on.
All right. So our current thresholds are 2,500 for independent purchases by the department, 2,500 to 7,500. The departments are required to get three quotes. Anything over 7,500 has to route through procurement for proper vetting. We're going to increase those thresholds to 5,000 for department purchases, 5,000 to 15,000 department purchases with their own three quotes. 15,000 to 50,000 will come through procurement to be vetted appropriately, and then anything over 50,000 will be bid out according to a proper solicitation. We're doing this to kind of, like Jeremy said, keep the goals of the business of the city moving so we're not having to bid out things just because inflation has taken those prices up. It also brings us in better line with our neighbors and our other local communities. In terms of the online bidding, I mentioned earlier that we have an implementation meeting tomorrow. We are looking at the 45 to 60-day implementation. We will have plans for rolling this out to our vendor community, both local and beyond. And we will not do away completely with the traditional method because we want to support our small businesses. That's how they operate, and we don't want to exclude them. Questions?
All right. Let's get a motion first. May I please have a motion to approve the first reading?
You're anxious.
A motion from Mr. Louder, second from Dr. Connor. Any discussion or questions from counsel?
You answered my questions earlier. Thank you.
Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Motion 2025-68.
Motion 2025-68 to appoint, reappoint one member to the Convention Center Hotel Board of Directors.
Okay, the term of Dr. Jessica Green has expired. Dr. Green does wish for reappointment, and the chairman's recommendation is for her reappointment.
Motion to reappoint.
Dr. Green's new expiration date will be July 25, 2028. Is there a motion for approval?
I think somebody's ready to get out of here. Mike's hungry.
No, I'm thinking, I'm just, must be.
Is there any discussion? No, I think. Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, just let me finish this one, okay?
Got it.
Motion 2025-69.
Motion 2025-69 to appoint, reappoint two members to the Human Rights Commission.
The chairman recommends the appointment of Renee Wright and Yartiza Tanaco to fill two of the three vacant seats. To correct expiration dates and put members back on staggering year terms, both new members will have expiration dates of February 22, 2027. Is there a motion for approval to appoint these members?
So moved.
Motion from Dr. Connor, second from Mr. McClure. Any discussion from counsel? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Motion 2025-70.
Motion 2025-70 to declare certain vehicles abandoned or derelict pursuant to the authority of Article 41 of Title 56, South Carolina Code of Laws, 2001.
Okay, is there anyone here who represents any of these vehicles? Mr. Louder, is there a motion to declare?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from counsel? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Have any non-agenda items from the public?
No, Your Honor.
Any communications from counsel or staff?
Yes, ma'am. In light of what we've discussed today about the inflation in cost when we're doing business and procurement, I think it was last year that I asked that we bring back on our permit requirements. Right now, we're at $1,000 where you don't have to get a permit. And seeing that the inflation has cost more for construction, I would ask that we would look at increasing that at some time to $1,500.
Look at that?
You said $1,000 to $1,500? Excuse me? You said $1,000 to $1,500?
Yes. Actually, I was thinking $2,000, but I didn't think I'd get anybody to go along with me, but.
Well, you never know until you try.
I'll play it safe and do 1,500. And if we, when we go that route, somebody wants to amend it, that'll be great. I'll second it.
I'd like to request that we bring in representatives for the Myrtle Beach Airport to present to us during a workshop and before the end of the year. That would be great.
Who did you say, Danny?
The Myrtle Beach Airport. If we could ask them to come and present to us. I think we've had a lot of conversations recently about the impacts of, with hospitality, and I think it'd be great to hear from them. I haven't heard from them since I've been on counsel.
Can you make that ask?
Anyone else?
I have one just housekeeping item for counsel and the public. We're getting to that point in the year where we're, the time is getting short with our meetings. We only have three more regular scheduled council meetings the rest of the year. The second one in October. We only have a meeting once in November and once in December. So for the month of November, we're going to meet in two weeks, like we normally do. Our normally scheduled workshop for November is November the 4th, which happens to be Election Day. So we are going to cancel that workshop. The following week, our normal, regular scheduled meeting would be the second Tuesday, which happens to be Veterans Day this year. So we have moved that to a special call meeting on the following day of Wednesday, November the 12th. Same time, same place. It's just Wednesday, the 12th instead of Tuesday, the 11th. And then finally, just as, just put everybody on notice, we, like I said earlier, we're getting to that point in time where time is running out on us. We may have to have a special called meeting at our workshop in December, as we have done in the past from time to time, to deal with some items that just need to get wrapped up at the end of the year. But that, we just don't know that right now.
Okay. Everybody good? I just want to thank, I wish the chamber were still here, for hosting the freshman caucus event, and thank Councilman Smith for attending that reception. It's important that we keep those relationships strong in Columbia. And when we help them, they help us. It's much appreciated. All right. This was a fun meeting, everybody, right? But now I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from counsel? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.